Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flip to the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZeele.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, we are privileged tonight to have with us the Hudson ambassadors, as you can see in the front row here. And they have given us a thank you card for sponsorship. Pass that around, get that to everybody to read, very nice card. Would you like to come forward? That's good.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Brown. I'm sponsored by Chad Johnson Construction, and I'm one of your 2018-2019 Hudson ambassadors. We are here tonight to thank you for your sponsorship towards the Hudson Ambassador Program. Since crowned, we have traveled to surrounding communities to represent Hudson and have volunteered at many community events.
Hi, I'm Maddie Zabel, and I was sponsored by Hudson Ford, and thank you for having us tonight. I've learned that this program is way more than just a crown. It's a program that has allowed me to grow as a person, also throughout my community. I've been given the chance to grow and learn in more ways than one, and I am so thankful for the opportunity and being able to meet new people, not just in my community, but throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel McKenzie, and I was sponsored by Hillcrest Animal Hospital, another one of your 2018 Hudson ambassadors. One event that we have had the opportunity to participate in this year was Spirit on the St. Croix. And at this event, we were able to volunteer at the hula hoop station, so we can promote a fun way to get an exercise. And we also made beads and keychains with children to encourage their creativity. Events like this have helped us spread encouraging and positive messages to citizens of Hudson as well as citizens from surrounding communities. As Hudson ambassadors, we have a voice in this town, and we are really excited to continue using it to better our community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maddie Boldra, and I was sponsored by Altamissimo Salon Downtown. I'm so thankful for the opportunity to have been chosen as one of your 2018 Hudson ambassadors. We have been pushed outside of our comfort zone and have each individually grown so much this past summer. I know we are definitely looking forward to what the rest of our year has in store for us, and we are so excited to encourage many other young women to be involved in our program. As our mission statement says, "Our one-year commitment to community service allows us to build relationships, develop leadership skills, and represent the Hudson community as goodwill ambassadors among our neighbors in Wisconsin and Minnesota." We have definitely shared many super fun memories, but have also stretched ourselves to be respectful, responsible, and resilient in all we do. Our program is more than attending teas and parades. Though those events are super fun, we truly are on court to serve as ambassadors who stand and represent for all that is good. We are a team who sticks together, works together, and laughs together. We are Team 18. We are super excited to continue serving as your 2018 Hudson ambassadors, and we thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Hudson is certainly fortunate to be represented by such wonderful ambassadors. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, it's time for comments from citizens. Anybody have any comments? Any...seriously?
Scott St. Martin, 222-1. Just want to announce next week, we're having an open house for Fire Prevention Week at the fire station. Monday, October 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00, we're going to have some demonstration tours, some things, activities for kids, so I just kind of want to mention that, so if people want to stop by. So, thank you.
Thanks, chief. Any other comments? Excuse me. Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Discussion of possible action on consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are: to approve the irregular meeting minutes of September 17, 2018; to approve the claims in amount of $688,995.41 contingent upon payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of a background check; approve the issuance of seven regular operator licenses for the period of October 2nd, 2018 to June 30th, 2020; approve the temporary Class B beer license for the St. Patrick Parish Fall Celebration; setting a public hearing date for, of November 12, 2018, for a zoning map amendment from B2 general business to RM1; multiple family residential and a comprehensive plan amendment from general commercial to medium density residential at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-2041-00-000; citizen state bank; set a public hearing date of November 12, 2018 for a zoning map amendment from AR Agriculture Residential to B2 General Commercial for a 5.54 acre ML portion of St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-2068-00-000 previously 040-1025-70-000 Land Dev Co. of Hudson LLC; and to approve the fuel bid contract for 10/1, 2018 to 9/30, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve, roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZeele.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Presentation by SEH regarding Carmichael Road Corridor Study.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming. So, and there's a reason for that. We're joined by Glenn Van Warmer today with SEH, our traffic engineering consultant. When we embarked on this journey about a year and a half ago, we learned after going through the study that, you know, with some of our future growth projections, that what was determined as a preferred alternative design for the exit two interchange might not accommodate the volumes that we were seeing. So that was the reason for the delay. We had to take a good, long, hard look at that and consult with DOT to make sure that we were planning appropriately for the future, understanding that we do have growth pressures that exist today, that have existed, that have created issues over the past. It was a busy road growing up here when I was a little kid, too. So, it's only compounded, and now I think we're at a point that I'm happy with the study's results. We think we have a good idea of how to move forward with recommendations. With that, I'll turn it over to Glenn. Could you hit the...okay, we got it. We had it working during, right before finance.
The people at home are seeing a blank screen and hearing nothing.
Something unplugged, because I know Jim tripped over there blocking out. Not to blame you, but you did trip. It's supposed to be easy. It's supposed to be easy to do this.
Yay.
You get a raise. Better call that department.
New IT guy.
Haven't had that problem since my pencil broke when I was doing one of those sheets of, the big Post-it notes ones. I'm here to present the final report for SEH for the long-awaited Carmichael Corridor Study. It's probably one of the more difficult ones that I've had to work on. Just a real quick follow-up to some of the things that we've talked about last January. Carmichael Road carries a lot of traffic. They have a number of problems. One, you have all the traffic that wants to get on 94 from that area has to go through that interchange or work its way around. And almost anybody who wants to cross 94 is also in that corridor. We've got some very close-spaced intersections which create some problems of trying to move traffic. We have a lot of turning movement volumes. There's some laning consistencies, there's only a few alternate vaults available, and you're carrying about 34,000 cars a day. So it's a very, very busy street with a number of problems. The study was, started with establishing good traffic base, the equivalent of 2017. In other words, we had turning movement counts and through traffic counts, and we got them all to match so that we had a very good base to start from. WISDOT reviewed it and said it's good. We used your land use plan and the approved developments. We did a traffic forecast for both 2025 and 2040 using your growth plan, your master plan, and any development. We used WISDOT and your preferred alternate for the interchange, which basically made it into a folded diamond. We then made a number of adjustments to the basic corridor design to try and get the 2025 and 2040 volumes to work. And then as a side to that, we also have got a traffic signal coordination plan together to get it to work. We made a presentation to you in January of 2018. At that time, we told you that 2025 volumes worked if we made modifications, but 2040 was not working. We just had more traffic than we were able to handle with the preferred alternate even with modifications. WISDOT reopened their study of the interchange and of the, well, their ramps, et cetera. In the spring, we furnished them with a significant amount of information. We met with them, reviewed some of their thoughts. They reviewed different types of interchanges and came back and said, "We think we can get the preferred alternate to work with some modifications." And we've been working with their consultant, and we've come up with a final concept, which has some significant changes only in terms of number of lanes, turn lanes, et cetera, to get it to work for 2040 volumes. Just as an example of how much turning traffic you have, north of Curvcrest Drive, between the South Ramp intersection and Curvcrest, you've got about 34,000 cars a day. That's a 2017 volume. But by the time you get north of Cooley Road, you're down to 12,000. So you lose 22,000 cars at both the North Ramp and the South Ramp and Cooley Road. You go south, and you lose about 21,000 just at Crestview Drive and Center Drive. And what that means is you've got a tremendous amount of turning traffic that you have to take and allow to get through. And it's extremely difficult to try and make all of that work. And when you get north of Vine or south of Hanley Road, you're down to four-digit, or you've got four-digit numbers of traffic. We've spent a lot of time trying to figure out the origins and destinations rather than just assume some numbers. We've spent time looking at the land use and how, where the trips come from for those different types of land uses, the residential use to the north, where does your commercial traffic come from. We had an origin destination study done by WISDOT, and we used some census data and just some knowledge of the traffic flow. So it's not a guess. It's a pretty well substantiated number of trips that, and how many, and where the trips are going. The WISDOT study was basically of the entire 94 corridor. In Hudson, they looked primarily at the Carmichael Interchange. They did some traffic forecasts, but this was done before you had, or when you still had a golf course and an empty dog track. They also were unable to, didn't have the time to go in and look at the detail that your study did in the city. And they had some changes suggested, and they came up with the number of alternates in the city, and WISDOT selected this preferred alternate. And if you can see from it, it's, I have to explain it as you go through, but essentially they took and made two loops in the east side. So that traffic that used to go eastbound, come up the ramp and make a left turn would now go under the bridge and make a loop to go north. So we've eliminated all those left turns. Similarly, similarly, when you went north, you would end up to go towards the cities, you would make a left turn in front of a lot of traffic and go down the ramp to go west. They put a loop in there so that you make a right turn and go around and come underneath. In essence, we've eliminated two substantial left-turning volumes from conflicts with opposite traffic. We've also moved a couple of the major intersections further apart, so we have more room in between to do weaving, to get traffic into the proper lane for where they want to go. The eastbound on-ramp is now where centered, or where Crestview is, it used to, or where Stage Line actually is on the east side. Stage Line now would connect to Center Drive. So you can see that we've moved a lot of traffic, and especially reduced the turning volumes of traffic. But even with all that work, when we put the 2025 volumes together, there were, we had to make some modifications, and when we got the 2040 volumes, which is considerable amount of traffic, it didn't quite work. We got the future land use from your comprehensive plan. I'll show you that in a second. We used the actual development traffic from St. Croix Meadows and Carmichael Ridge, so we have some very, very good data for those. It's not a guess that they'll have some commercial and some residential, it's number of units and square footage. And then we assumed there'd be some infill and redevelopment. This is the comprehensive land use plan, it's your master plan. And if you look at the St. Croix Meadows site, the big red spot down at the south end, you'll see that that is almost as big as a lot of the commercial that you already have up near Crestview and on the west side. So that's going to generate a significant amount of traffic. If you look at that pink thing where the golf course is, you'll see that that's a large area, too, and you're getting not only the residential development that's going in there, but also they have a commercial and, I guess it's mostly a commercial development plan for the southeast side of that. That came out of their development plan. But there's also commercial going north from the golf course along Carmichael, all the way up to Vine Street. You have some additional commercial down on Meyer Road where the Lee property is. And so you can see you're generating an awful lot of trips from all of this traffic. And we use that model, that plan, to generate, to develop or determine how many trips there will be from the land, and then use some of the other information we have to determine what routes they'd be on. We use the computer. I've done one manually, and it's a nightmare. So I like computers, once I get them turned on. The computer model, we used the base of the 2017 traffic volumes, so we've got a very good base of traffic. That's the existing. We added some background growth, like on County Road F to the south, or on some of the cross streets, but we didn't use a single figure. We adapted it to that particular road. Coming from the south, out of, down by the camp down there, we got about 1% per year. But you don't, you can't expect much of any growth on, say, Center Drive to the west of Carmichael. It only goes into Menards and Home Depot. There's not going to be much. So we wanted that to be as accurate as possible for the future. We used your, the land use and all the development traffic, and we had some help from the developers as to where they anticipated traffic coming from, and then our own work, and that allowed us to plot out some routes or at least destinations. Then the computer took all of the information and gave us traffic volumes at a number of locations. It gave us how many left turns we anticipated at Center Drive, how many came off of Crestview Road to go north. And then we reviewed that information. The question was, will it work? And the basis for will it work is a level of service, or delays, or backup, or queues of traffic. Now, level of service is just like in school. An A and B are great. You can experience a level of service A about 2 o'clock in the morning, almost anywhere in the city. But when you start getting into some of the others in the afternoon, you're down to a level of service D, which is acceptable in an urban area, but it means you're going to have some congestion, you're going to be traveling a little slower than the speed limit. When you get to E, that's when you have stop-and-go traffic. And E is basically not acceptable unless you say, "Well, we don't care how long it takes for people to get down the road." F means they're going to be looking at major delay. F is like what happens if you have a crash on 94 in Woodbury, and what happens backing up. You sit and look at it. So, and you can't just look at an intersection, you need to look at all the movements to make sure that you don't have a higher level of service for the entire intersection at, say, a D, and then have a left turn and operates F, because those people won't be too happy, and we need to get traffic moving from all of them. This is a printout. This is what gives us some nightmares, because anything that's red up there is an F. Anything that's kind of an orange is an E, and those we have to either get rid of or figure out we're going to live with them. I don't expect you to read and understand all that. It's, I've been in the business a long time, and I'm still learning what some of those little figures are at the end. The simulation, which I showed you in January, actually looks like it shows little cars that are driving along. It actually made noise, and you finally had to turn it off because we couldn't put a noise wall up for you. But the, it gives us a visualization of traffic flow, which is better than just some numbers at intersections. We can spot some of the reasons why this low level of service is occurring. We can spot the relationships between intersections rather than just have letter grades. And we can test ideas, and that's what we spent basically three months doing, is trying this and trying that to get it to work. The conclusions for 2025 is the preferred alternate is needed. When we just ran it on your existing system with the split, with the phasing that you have up at Cooley Road and all of those, it didn't work. Didn't even come close to working. And that was just primarily with most of the St. Croix Meadows traffic and about half of the commercial traffic from Carmichael Ridge. And so then you've got another 15 years to get to 2040. But Carmichael Road would need a four-lane section north of Cooley Road. In other words, past Walgreens, through the Hillcrest intersection. Excuse me. Vine Street and Carmichael Road need some improvements. We could get by in 2025, we're just doing a little widening on the north side so that we provide a southbound left turn lane. If you sit there in the morning or in the evening, and there's a left turn in front of you, you're going to wait for a while. If we just add a left turn lane, but it has to be a certain length. But then there's some right turns that are involved, and so we've put in a little longer right turn lane on the eastbound direction. And when we got done with all that in 2025, the only thing that wasn't working very well was the I-94 eastbound off-ramp. That would back down almost to the freeway. And if you've had discussions with WISDOT, WISDOT does not like backups onto their freeways. It's dangerous, and we don't want them either because that's Hudson residents or customers sitting out there in traffic. So they had some concerns, and we wanted to try and get it to work better. But we went right to 2040 last December, and it needed some significant modifications, far beyond just adding a lane or lengthening something. Needs four lanes, because in 2040, we're assuming that all that development that shows up on the north end of Carmichael, up near Vine Street, would be in place. There's commercial, there's multiple family. And so to get that to work, we would need two lanes through and left and right turn lanes at all the major intersections. Carmichael north of Vine Street, we can get by with a single lane in each direction, but we need turn lanes. So between Vine Street and probably the middle school, we would end up widening, dropping the one lane northbound, and we have two lanes coming through Vine, we drop them to one lane. We'd add a lane at the intersection to get traffic through the Vine Street intersection. The good news is, we did some things at the eastbound off-ramp to get it to work satisfactorily. Excuse me. Yeah. But WISDOT's still going to have questions about the modifications, because we widened their bridge a little bit more, we've added some lanes on their ramps, so they're going to question that. And the other thing is, you're going to need to have some restraint on development in the corridor. I don't like to say that, but you can't just keep putting things in and having them generate traffic, because there's a limit to how much you can get through an intersection. Everything that's on your comp plan seems to work, but if somebody comes in and wants to put in a megaplex somewhere, it's not going to, it's not going to work very well. Now, this is where it gets to be interesting. This is actually, this is not a drawing of the, of what we came up with. It's part of the simulation program. What we can do is add a lane very eas, I won't say easily, but you can add a lane somewhere, and then you can run the program, and you can see how it works. This shows basically Crestview up to Cooley Road, and you can see some lanes. This is the Cooley Road and the North Ramp. You can see that by taking the westbound off-ramp and putting it Cooley Road, there's no longer an intersection where the ramp was. So instead of having intersections of Cooley, North Ramp, South Ramp, and Crestview, we've got an intersection of Cooley with the ramp, and then a long distance down to the next full intersection, which is Crestview. But we had to add some lanes. In this one, we've had, we now have two lanes, north of Cooley Road, south, in the southbound direction, we'd end up with three. There's a third lane there. Essentially, it's now used as a right turn lane by people who are a little aggressive, but we'd have to add a right turn lane on the outside. We've also added a fourth lane between Cooley Road and the ramp to go west. That lane would be strictly for southbound right turns. I think just about everything else is pretty much as is. We'd have three lanes at the intersection for eastbound Cooley Road. One would be a right turn lane, and there'd be a dual left to go north. Incidentally, I suppose it might, Mr. Mayor, whatever you would like to do, if you want to take questions on each of these individually, we can, while we have them up, or we can hold it to the end.
And we can do that. Anybody have questions so far? The, I guess the one question I have is the frontage road going east off of Carmichael?
Yes. That's been moved north.
That's, that's it up north there? So...
Actually, it goes way north up to tie in to Hillcrest. That's what was in the original preferred alternate.
Okay. Okay.
This is where we spent probably a month trying to get this intersection to work. The simulation program showed us things we couldn't dig out of those fancy prints, or printouts with all the red and green, or red and yellow. We had a three-lane off-ramp. The third lane is strictly for traffic that wants to turn right on the Carmichael to go south, and then right to go east or west on Crestview. By doing that, we eliminate a lot of the merges and the weaves that are involved with traffic coming off the ramp. We also moved the left turn lanes that would go left now onto the I-94 eastbound on-ramp. Those lanes originally were only from the off-ramp that shows at the bottom of this to the Crestview intersection. We lengthened so they went out almost to the bridge, so that all the left-turning traffic would get out of those through lanes, and we wouldn't have that, those people in there conflicting with the traffic coming off the ramp. It's hard to explain this without the simulation program working. Took us a while to figure out why it was breaking down.
So there's two exits. There's an exit to go south on Carmichael, and then there's an exit to go north on Carmichael. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes. If you want to go north on Carmichael, you go eastbound underneath the bridge and around the loop and go north. And so two-lane ramp at the top, so you're making a double right turn onto Carmichael.
Gotcha.
And then if you want to go south, you've got the two-lane off-ramp, same as you have today, but then it goes into three lanes. Third lane would be marked as Crestview only.
We're just going to take from the council right now, Marion.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to anticipate your question. Is it, are there bike lanes or pedestrians crossing, or what's going on with the bikes?
I got some of that later on, and we looked at the pedestrians from north of south city limits. So I was part of it.
So that will come later, sorry?
Yes, please. This is the Vine Street intersection with the two through lanes. You can see we haven't done much of anything on Vine, other than lengthen the eastbound right turn lane and make a few adjustments for the lengths of the westbound turn lanes. This is strictly for our model of the intersection, so don't worry about the two lanes all the way north. We have a concept that we're trying to finish up that shows how we can get back to one lane in each direction. But if you look at all of the intersections that you have, and they're commercial, you have the commercial entrance to the shopping center, your Grand View Park, two entrances to the, the St. Croix County Center. And so we're trying to not have those become bottlenecks, because you're going to have some traffic growth north of Vine Street, too. And so we're trying to make sure that we aren't just looking at the current critical intersections, but also looking at your future intersections.
That must be the, so north of Vine on Carmichael?
Yes.
That widening there, I thought that was something that was difficult for you guys to be able to do with the land that's there? Like you'd have to, because there's quite a bit of drop-off there?
There is. We don't think it's impossible, but the only way we can get it to work is to add these lanes. So, I mean, the trade-off will come when you start looking at the costs, and if the costs are too high, then you've got to look at, well, how do we get the traffic through? Or how do we cut the traffic down?
Gotcha.
Fortunately, north of there is pretty well built up and there's not much commercial development, so we're not going to see a lot of traffic growth there. This is Hillcrest Drive. It doesn't show the roundabout to the west, but it does show all of the lanes. It's essentially a two lanes, two through lanes in each direction on Carmichael, a left turn and a right turn lane, but the left turns are dual left turn lanes, both northbound and southbound. And that is because we're trying to get as much traffic through each cycle of the signal as we can. We have to move them through so that we can get the through traffic moving.
You're suggesting taking the roundabouts out of that intersection?
No, no. It's there. I just pointed out that this is strictly a schematic we use. The length of those two eastbound left turn lanes that are shown on, coming from the Hillcrest area, or from the Carmichael Ridge area, those are actually there right now. In fact, we worked with the developer, this engineer on that, to get the road design for the future. It only has the two lanes, but if you look underneath, you can see that we've got it so that you can add two lanes by just moving the south curve line. The sidewalks moved out far enough, so it's relatively simple. The westbound lanes there, it takes the two lanes and puts them into one, and you can see the beginning of the roundabout on the left side of that picture. We also got the Holiday Inn entrance worked in there, and I think that's how it ended up being built, or at least I hope they built it that way. So we've, we've been thinking of this as we've been reviewing some of the development plans that have come in. It's a typical major intersection design. This is Crestview Drive. You had a triple left in order to handle all the eastbound traffic. And if you watched the three lanes work, you could tell the locals from those that weren't familiar, because the locals knew what lane to get in, and the others were always trying to figure out what lane they should have been in. But we, because we no longer, we have the on-ramp on the east side of that intersection, so the traffic on Crestview really has to go straight across to get to the on-ramp, so we only need two left turn lanes. But we have, still have two through lanes primarily because of the backup that would occur when they are stopped by the red light eastbound. And we don't want them to interfere with the eastbound right turn lane or storage in the eastbound left turn lanes. It's all, it's all these little things that make a difference in being able to get the intersections to work. The goal is always to never have the intersection with unused time. Sometimes you sit on intersections like you've been on Highway 36 and you watch when there's one lane going and nobody else is moving. We're trying to get traffic to move as much as possible through here. So we've added a eastbound right turn lane, which is going to have to move that trail just a little bit, we think. This is Center Drive. Center Drive is now the connection to Stage Line Drive in the hospital. So in the original preferred alternate, there was a dual left turn lane southbound. We've added a mirrored one on the northbound so that we can move two lanes of traffic through. That took care of a few problems of backup, but also moves traffic through a little bit quicker. That isn't wide enough, so we have to move a curb a little bit, about 200 feet of curb on Center Drive on the west side. But other than that, oh, we also added a third through lane in order to get traffic moving through there and getting line, and having enough storage between this intersection and Crestview. Down at Hanley, we dropped the right lane, just as we are now doing it at Center. The right lane drops and becomes a right turn lane, and it's basically the intersection you see today, with the exception of making a few changes on Hanley Road. But one we already made when Hanley Road was redone this, this summer, and has to add the westbound left turn. We still need to do a little bit of work on the west side in order to get enough storage in each of those lanes, and then also to try to develop some kind of left turn lanes westbound so that we don't back up traffic into the intersection. Excuse me again. We've also looked at all the intersections to the south, Mayor Road, intersections that'll come out of St. Croix Meadows into the north, and tried to make sure that those would work You asked about the trail system, and we looked at the, how it fits into your citywide trail system. And you need the Carmichael corridor for a trail to cross 94. I mean, you only have two choices there, and Hagan Road, and this Carmichael is basically the only full north-south road. It connects with a lot of different trails along the line from the one up by north of the Civic, or north of the St. Croix Center, and the one on Crestview, and the one on Hanley. And so you've got many portions of that trail in place already. St. Croix County and their trail, or bicycle and pedestrian plan said the connection to Rivercrest School from Hagan Street Bridge is their number one priority. But that included a connection between Albert Street and Mayor Road. So that would take care of your connection south to the school. Your plan, your bike plan, I believe, also includes the connection from Vine Street south to Deer Haven. There's no trail in there. So you would have a continuous trail essentially from the north city limits to the school on the south. The preferred interchange concept that the DOT had did include a trail. So it would be continuous and through the entire area. We also looked at the corridor itself in terms of the adequacy of the trail, and you have a number of pedestrian ramps, you know, with the handicapped, domes at the bottom and that. A lot of them are nothing more than a dropped curb, but it's only a few feet wide. Those, if they're not included in the rebuilding of the interchange area, it's something that should be included in your long-range plan. There are some. You go up to the middle school and Burr Oak Drive on the left, on the west side. If you look at the area for the kids, the south and the west trail actually, or crosswalks actually meet in the street. And, you know, putting kids in the street is not good, so you want to move the crossings back a ways, put in a landing area, and you have that at several intersections. And we spell those out at every intersection in the report. There's some crosswalk locations, if you cross in front of the driveway at Walgreens, it actually is about 110 feet long because it's almost, it's right next to Carmichael Road, where if you moved it around the corner, you cut it down to about 60 feet, make it a lot safer and make the pedestrians more visible. I'm not going to go through every intersection with you tonight, because you'd probably throw me out of here before, because you'd be sleeping. But we have that in the report. Every intersection's been analyzed. Not a part of what I was talking about, but you have signal coordination. What coordination should do is give you a series of green lights for traffic as it approaches the intersection. Be real simple if this were a one-way street, because all you'd do is figure out when traffic from this street is going to get to the next one and turn it green. When you get two lanes, two directions of traffic, it becomes a lot harder. If you have close-spaced intersections, which is what you have today, it becomes very difficult. That's one of the reasons why we want to pull the intersections apart and the signals apart. When you have high volumes of turning traffic, which we showed you, it becomes extremely difficult. And then you throw in weaving maneuvers and lane discontinuity, and it's, it's a real challenge. But we have one that'll work. The timing plan's completed. WISDOT, this past week, I believe, just installed their two new controllers at the ramp intersections. The timings are set into almost all of the controllers now. The I-94 construction is creating some pretty interesting traffic patterns in the Hudson area. And so if we put the timing in and we had that abnormal traffic, we wouldn't be able to really look at what's going to happen when they're done. And you can't just put the timing in and walk away and say, we're done. Need to go out there and watch it. And so we'll implement it this fall as soon as the construction on 94 is done. The good news is, if you use, if you build what's on our plan, it'll be pretty easy, much easier. I won't say easy. It'll be easier to implement a plan. Your next steps, we need to take this all to WISDOT because they are, they have control over it. We think we've done a pretty good job of communicating with them, but we'd like to not just send them a report. We think we should be showing them the simulation program, presenting all of the reasons why, making sure that they understand what has been done, and try to get them to buy into it. What the city would need to do is develop a corridor plan. In other words, what do you need to do and at what time does it need to be done? In other words, when would you want to do the work north of Vine Street? And when is it most, when is it most beneficial? You have some development, and maybe when the development goes in, you can co-op with them to get something done. Thank you, Mike. When we, we worked with one of the developers, we suggested that maybe he could build a sidewalk on the north side of the street instead of in front of his property, because it would connect some trail, and it would, the sidewalk in front of his property would, doesn't connect anything. So we're looking for all those little things. Like what we did with the developer's engineer on the west side of Hillcrest. You know, use their money and your money as more, as good as possible. And then have to look at funding options, and with the current WISDOT policy and philosophy, I'm not sure how to do that.
Questions?
On that last slide, on the last bullet point, you had signal coordination, timing system for the in-place roadway. That is what we have right now, which needs to be adjusted?
That's what I will, that's what we will put in this fall.
Okay.
So it should work better, but you still have a lot of problems where it's not going to be exactly smooth because all your turning traffic on, but it'll work better than it does today.
Well, that's good to hear, because I know there's someone in the audience who'd like to ask some probably a better question of that, huh? Thank you.
I throw an awful lot at you. I guess the direction we'd like is to, if you're in agreement with the concept, we'll go to MINDOT. I'm speaking for Mike, maybe.
We'll go to Wisconsin DOT, and I think the other thing is, we really, as we begin this capital improvement planning phase, we, as a city, staff's recommendation would be that we've got to get something moving. We've got to get DOT in favor of it, approve their, you know, our tweaks to their program. But it's a significant cost, and I think we all realize there's going to be a significant cost to the city, but there's been that misconception that this was just going to happen magically in 2025. It's not. It's not happening. It's not on any DOT's plans to date. So I envision bringing the study back, incorporating it into the comp plan, and then moving forward with a plan to actually implement in the very near future.
Irregardless of that, design is what they are going to move forward with, with us?
As long as they buy off on the, on the tweaks, the little tweaks that Glenn and his team made to it, yes.
Because I do have concerns about that exit ramp to northbound Carmichael from I-94, and how much land that is chopping out of potential development.
Thirty acres, isn't it?
You're talking about the eastbound or westbound?
The northeast quadrant.
Northeast corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, the northeast corner. Two things about that. One, the DOT plan did take a lot of land. And secondly, when we ran the model, we did, we had two northeast quadrant scenarios. One was primarily residential, and that's the one we got to work. We also had a proposed Walmart up there 10 years ago, and we took their trip generation and put it in the program, and it, it did not work. We had too much traffic coming south. We could not handle it with this interchange concept.
With what's, with what we have now?
No, with the future.
That's new one?
If we put it into our new one, well, I guess I'm done. If we put it into the 2040 model that we have generated based on the preferred alternate and some modifications, when we put that traffic in, it had a pretty heavy flow coming on to Carmichael and Hillcrest, and that started to push that intersection over. But then coming southbound through the Cooley Road and through the ramp intersections, we were unable to get that to work. Maybe when we get a final design, get all that worked out and put it back in the model, we can, can run that again.
Yeah, because I'm not sold on that, whether it works or not. And I'm assuming it does, you did the model. But taking so much development away from what little land we have to develop, and some people may like that, some don't, but...
The problem we're into is trying to balance moving traffic to all your existing development and permitting additional development, which will complicate significantly the problems that we have. And we, well, it's why we spent months trying to figure out how to get it to work, and both we and the DOT consultant came to the same conclusion, and that's that we just, it just overloads it. I mean, it's like a water pipe, you can only put so much down it before it doesn't fit.
It's Ton of Hudson, anyway. I mean, they're taking their land, they're not taking our land.
Right. So any bridge, any additional bridge crossings come up?
We, early in the process, in fact, back when we did the comp transportation plan, we had some sketches, and we showed an alternate bridge, and that got WISDOT to go out and do an origin destination study. And their determination was that the new bridge was not justified. The new bridge would have been located to start in the rest area and then end up going down across Cooley Road and into Ward Avenue Extended. Well, we kind of filled those two places up, so we don't have a location for it, even if WISDOT would say, well, maybe it'll work. We've looked at a, WISDOT looked at a ramp to the east, coming off Stage Line somewhere, because it's up in the air, make a T-intersection and go across. But that didn't, didn't pull traffic, because most of the traffic comes from the west side of Carmichael. So, yeah, we looked at, we and WISDOT both looked at adding an additional bridge, and A, we don't know where it would fit without taking a lot of development out, and B...
Well, they're doing that anyways.
Yeah, but where you take out existing or you take out potential is a little different cost-wise.
I think we also had asked that you guys look at the Higgin Street Crossing Bridge on 11th Street. What was concluded there? That is just, that's a fail right there, that hole.
It is. And we, when we worked with the St. Croix Meadows developer, we, we put like 6% of their traffic running through industrial over to that, and... And in the PM peak, you have seven hundred and fifty northbound, eight hundred and fifty southbound vehicles on the bridge already. And so there's only so much more you can put in there. But also if we try and generate more traffic going that way, we're going to be putting it through on Industrial Boulevard or O'Keefe Road, not O'Keefe, O, O somebody. And onto the Hagan Street Bridge, then we, they're either going to go up Eleventh into the neighborhood or have to go down Cooley Road and there's some limits to how much we can spend there.
It needs to be widened.
Pardon?
That bridge needs to be widened, is my.
The bridge does to get it to flow better and we can get some more traffic to come that way, but it'd be primarily the traffic going west that would go down and use that little slip ramp that's still there. And fortunately, WISDOT has not said anything about taking it out because they take that out, we're going to have some more traffic problems in other locations. Forty-five hundred cars a day on that ramp.
Are they considering the slip ramp eastbound at all?
We talked to them and they, they were not very receptive.
They took it out.
I know. I'm wondering if they're reconsidering.
Have you done any analysis what that would look like if we had that?
We did. When we were running the problems with 2040 traffic, we took thirty percent of the traffic off that ramp and put it somewhere. We just threw it away and to see if we could get it to work and it still didn't take care of all of the problems. The problems we have in trying to develop the northeast quadrant is not with the outbound, but it's, it's southbound traffic from that northeast development that comes through Hillcrest, Cooley and, and into the south ramp intersection. So it's, it's a little different problem. So we can't pull traffic from here and solve a problem over there.
So is the DOT's contention on the Hagan Street Bridge, they agreeing with widening in it?
We haven't talked to them about the widening of the bridge. We've been primarily talking to them about Carmichael Corridor.
I think we were, we.
We talked with them about it. The issue is, is that's, you know, that's entirely a, a city cost at that point. It's our bridge. You know, I mean, that's ultimately what it boils down to. And I think in the last conversation that we had with them, we talked about, you know, is there another overpass, you know, at that point, the old Fleet Farm building was for sale, you know, do we have enough room there? Their consultants looked at a number of different options because their thought was, well, if we can keep what the preferred alternative was and change some things up, you know, whether it be a Hagan or another overpass, both west or east, putting an off-ramp back in, what would that look like? And I think ultimately you arrive at the same conclusion every time is you can, you can make changes that alleviate one issue, but ultimately the Carmichael Road issue remains. And then also with, and then the, the sheer cost of the, the widening of the bridge. You know, I, I had a number, I can get it for you, but it was, it was over half of what it'll be, what our share will be on the preferred alternative for all of Carmichael.
So you said that they don't have this scheduled yet? Is that what you said?
No. Nope.
So what was, obviously that was their design, right?
Yep. But to get it in the plan, the city has to obviously commit to funding its portion of the project as well. And at that point in time, and Glenn, you were here then too, you know, the council didn't want to move forward with a, a funding plan for those improvements at that time, is my understanding. So the DOT said, okay, we'll just maintain what we have. And ultimately, you know, their biggest concern is making sure tra, like Glenn said, traffic can't back up on the interstate. It's just, you know, so that's where the, both the feds and the state get, get nervous. But how Carmichael Road functions really isn't necessarily their concern. It's not, it's not a state highway.
Following up on Randy's question, how much of the potential development on the east side of Carmichael between Cooley and Vine are you restricting? I'm assuming that's from, from your comments, you said we're going to have to restrict development, that that's, you're talking about that area.
I think high trip generators, you know.
We've, we kept in the traffic on the east side of Carmichael, north of the church. So that, that corner development, southeast corner of Vine and Carmichael is still in there with the, with commercial and multiple. And we went to primarily residential in the rest of that quadrant rather than have a large commercial area. I'm sure there, there would be some strip commercial along there, but it wouldn't be as deep as you would have for a major retailer, Walmart or Costco or something like that.
That's significant.
Yes.
That's changed a lot of people's minds.
Well, I just came over here hoping that you don't kill messengers.
Can we go?
It's reality.
It's a price of waiting.
Wondering if we could go back, it was a lot to absorb, so thank you. But I'm, I'm confused on the pedestrian bicycle path.
As I am.
Is, are, is it your suggestion that the Carmichael Bridge does not carry pedestrian?
The Carmichael Bridge, we, we've tried to make sure that you have a west-side trail that's safe and adequate from essentially the school, South School, River Crest, all the way up to Vine Street. Then it crosses over and then you've already got a trail on the east side. But there's some segments in there that have some questionable little design things that you need to work on.
Gotcha. I just wanted to clarify that because you said also Hagan would be a part of the trail and then we run into that issue with it not being wide enough.
Yep. And that's, you know, and, and going back to the, the county's bike pedestrian plan too, obviously that's something that we'll continue moving forward, but we'll have to have, we need to have pedestrian and bike accommodations in both locations.
Gotcha.
Now, I, I have concerns about, although I think based on what I see, we need, excuse me, bike and pedestrian access across Carmichael Bridge. But with the, every time there's a yield sign, you're in danger on that, on that bridge. It's scary to me to watch junior high kids crossing that bridge and with the traffic and people not watching, all they're doing is focusing on making a right turn.
What we've tried to do is look at the trail in its entirety and make suggestions where you could improve the safety as much as possible. There are a couple of yield conditions, they almost are necessary to have. But if you put the trail and you, you provide some of the amenities that go along with the trail there, I think we can make it noticeable and say, the biggest thing is sight distance. They can see the pads, there's a better chance of that. And pads can turn around. One of the things we're trying to do is make it so that wherever the pedestrians cross, they have an area where they can see both directions. That's why we want to pull them back away from the middle of a radius.
I, I suspect the cost would be significant, but one of the things that has been mentioned is can we pull all the pad traffic off of Carmichael, off the interchange? With a separate, with a bike pad ramp? I mean, that's, those are costly, but that's one way of, and possibly improve, improve the traffic flow on.
The, the problems would probably be how to get the pedestrians to the bridge unless they were close by to the existing bridge. And then the cost of a freestanding bridge and all the, and the way of getting people to it would be so much more than just adding it on to the edge of a bridge. So it probably boils down economics.
Well, I, I think someone needs to write the economic picture on this to say, how much, how much is the safety worth? That level, you know, increasing that level of safety. No one's talked about a number. They say, just say it's expensive. I'd like to have some ballpark estimate of what it would cost to, to separate that, to have that separate bridge. We'll have to work out the details of how you get them off of Carmichael Trail to that bridge and across and then, and then connecting them back up. But there's a parking right on the other side, so there's space on, on that side, on the, on the north side. But it's, it's just, I don't know how much, I don't want to spend a lot of engineering time on this, but.
Just, I think there's alternates within the corridor to look at. I think the first thing is to get the DOT to agree that we need to do more than just their preferred alternate and that we need to get the process rolling. Once you get into it, then all the alternates will start to, to come out. So it's not a bad idea at all, but probably premature at this point to find out.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think I'd want to hold up us moving forward with the DOT. We have to get that, we, we need, we need that.
But I, I think this is, you know, now, this is the price of waiting. I mean, years and years and years. And I think everybody kind of always had, had it in the back of their minds, we got to do something, got to do something. Meanwhile, the city continues to grow and unfortunately now is a time where we, we are forced to do something. So I'll, I see some nodding heads, so I'll bring it back as an actual adoption into our comp plan, much like we do with the Riverfront Vision Study. And then it'll be a part of that planning document as well. When we move forward with the, the state, they say, okay, well, is it in your plan? Yeah, we have it in our comprehensive plan to move forward with this. And then staff will work with finance as well to, to look at different funding, you know, options.
Mike, can you send us all a copy of the plan itself so we can have some good reading for nighttime?
Seventy-some pages, right?
There's only, only eighty pages.
Yep.
But I won't put all the charts in.
He wants the charts, the visuals.
Yeah, I need pictures.
Pictures. Depending on the size of it too, we could post it on the website.
We're going to post it on the website too. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, the, the schematics showing the, the interchanges would be very helpful.
The one thing that I will, we'll have to make very clear is those drawings that we have are out of. The drawings that we have are out of our simulation program. They do not represent geometric design in any way. Because otherwise somebody's going to say, well, you've got a ramp that doesn't even connect to the road.
Is this beyond 2025 or is it sooner than 2025?
In our meeting with DOT, they said generally it takes six to eight years to go through their approvals, their planning, right-of-way acquisition. That's just the general process that it takes.
Six to eight years to starting construction or to completion?
Starting construction. Yep.
And that begins when we have determined a finance package?
Yep. And generally we, we, we as a city are responsible for half, half the cost.
Of the intersection, that piece, the rest of it.
Yeah, yeah. On the rest, we're, it's all us.
But I think the, if, if the good news is that if they go with the preferred plan and we have to pay half, that preferred plan goes all the way to Hillcrest and south to center. So it does take up a lot of the major work, so. We're hoping that they'll say, yeah, we'll pay for half and not say only up to.
Yeah.
So we got to do some good talk.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Perfect. We're going to stay up here because we're the next one too, I think.
We're going to postpone that one. Presentation on potential transportation improvement options to consider as part of the 2021 WISDOT Highway 35 slash Second Street Project. Discussion possible action on potential transportation improvement options to consider as part of the 2021 WISDOT Highway 35 slash Second Street Project.
So a few months ago, the council may remember approving an LOE to look at different design options that we could piggyback on the 2021 Second Street Highway 35 reconstruct. So Glenn and his team put together some options. We'll run through these really quickly. Glenn, do you want to say? I know we're, we're reaching fatigue, I think. Do you want to go ahead? Did you have a few slides?
Yeah. We, we put together a letter. There's some drawings in there. I could go through them all, but basically we're trying to introduce some traffic calming on Second. And basically introduce some up at St. Croix Avenue where you've got a lot of crossing. We put, show a median in there. We show a couple of bump outs, one up on, well, they're in your pack, at Myrtle Street. We got one downtown in Washington or on Wisconsin. All of it is designed to try and calm traffic, slow them down, let them know that they're getting into the, the downtown area or getting into the residential area. We have some costs in there. Those costs are all-inclusive. They include the construction, they include design, they include engineering inspection.
Talk a little bit about the savings that the city realized.
The, I should have used my, my slides, but I'm time-conscious. You can do these rarely, relatively cheaply because you're already doing some, I have some on the wrong one here. You have a significant savings opportunity if you're overall installing them separately because they're already putting in curb, they've already got all of the equipment out there, they've got quantities that are low-priced, so you, you can save a lot of money by doing it now. It's similar to Hanley Road where we put in the medians and did some of that work and it was actually relatively cheap compared to going back in and ripping up the road and doing them. We did a minimum amount of enhancements to try and achieve some traffic calming and to take care of pedestrians at about two major intersections, Locust and St. Croix. So rather than go through it all, I'll just ask for questions.
Can I ask questions, Glenn? So the bump out curbs, I haven't seen those. So they're designed to slow traffic? Is that, is that the kind of the point of them?
Yeah. If you've been up on, in New Richmond, we put a couple in up there, one going into residential area, one up on west, on North Fourth Street. And they have seemed to slow traffic down.
Somerset too.
Somerset. So here's my, my concerns, I haven't seen them in use, so. Couple of concerns, one is I don't, I don't feel like that Highway 35 is that wide to begin with where they're talking about the bump outs. My thought when I looked at the pictures was possibility of squeezing people together and making it maybe less safe, I'm not sure. I know that the traffic's going slower, but it just doesn't seem like there's a lot of width to play around with with some of the sidewalks there.
Actually, there's probably more width than you anticipate. We only need about twenty-four feet between two islands to safely move traffic in, in two directions. And if you have a thirty-six-foot street, you're taking about six feet out of each side and that usually comes out enough to where drivers, as they're coming down the street, they see it narrowing and so they'll slow down. It's just like if you see a parked truck on the side, you have a tendency to either move over or slow down.
And my other question is in the winter, so snow plowing and also trying to navigate a street when you can't see the curb because there's too much snow on it.
When we did the New Richmond ones, we actually set up a, a spot where they could run their snow plows out and see what radius do we need and that's what we put in, so they could plow them quite easy. If you see one that's got a lot of nicks from the plow, it's usually because it was, was too, too brunt. So they can be designed so they're relatively snowplow safe, but that does not mean that somebody's not going to nick it or somebody that's driving when they probably shouldn't be isn't going to bounce over it.
That's, yes, I'm thinking if they gets, if he gets, you don't, you don't know where that curb is really if it's covered in snow.
Well, I'm assuming they would have, there would be markers on the, on the bump out itself.
Not necessarily.
In general, you know, and in downtown, in that urban environment, our downtown core, we're already going at relatively slow speeds because there's only so much sidewalk and we're also scooping the snow and hauling it out. So, you know, that's the other thing, it's a little different than, you know, in a residential.
And then my third question would be about parking.
Yep.
We're always talking about parking's a premium and I realize some of this isn't right smack downtown, but it seems like you're actually removing parking spaces from that space or no?
Well, these are just sketches. I think the ones we put in, we've taken out very few parking spaces in the downtown and hardly any in a residential area. I'm not guaranteeing that, but you can get it back in quick enough so that you can bring the bump out islands out and get them back in so that they can legally park there yet. You can only park so close to an intersection anyhow, or crosswalk anyway.
Right. One of the issues that we have with downtown or with other streets is when we park too close to the corner, there is no visibility of a, of a pedestrian. And I know you guys are dealing with that, trying to, how far back do we keep striping so there's no parking? Well, now the pedestrians can be further out, so they're more visible. So we, we add to that and it may actually, it probably won't take up any more parking spaces than, than we've already eliminated or parking space. It's, that's the way it's designed anyway.
Paul, I can tell you a number of times at our public safety meetings, it's been suggested we try to get some kind of traffic taming in, in our intersections on that, on 35. And these have come up many different times.
Okay.
And people are friendly with these. They, they seem to work.
Okay.
Is I guess the bottom line. Is I guess the bottom line. I'm in favor of those. And I don't think we're overdoing it, as I've seen elsewhere. I'm actually in favor of the whole thing you presented out. Now's the time to do it right, save us money in the long run, and do it now. Do it right first time.
We've only done a few intersections, and what we think that by doing those at set intervals, we can get the same effect as if we tried to do every one.
So can I ask one other question? So if I'm, if I'm heading down thirty-five north and I'm trying to take a right, and this bump out is on, say, Wisconsin or Locust or whatever that is, are we essentially taking like some of that right-hand turn lane away as well? Or how does that work?
Well, like at, up at Myrtle, there's probably not enough room for somebody to get, make a right turn out of the curb lane and have somebody else pass them without that person passing them going over the center line. So what we're doing is slowing down the traffic so they make a right turn and they can, they can see their path and they know where there's pedestrians, and we don't have somebody trying to pass them as they're doing it. So it's actually safer than by trying to develop some very skinny turn lanes and, and try to have all this passing maneuver. Especially, and that's why we went to St., at St. Croix, we went to medians because we want to make sure that those kids that are crossing from the three schools have a median there. And we don't have any passing.
And then the only other thing would be the decorative lighting. Currently, the state poles are just wood poles. We're looking at moving a number of those lights and those warning signals out of the sidewalk as much as we can, especially working with River City Center and the developers there where we've got at least three obstructions in the middle of the sidewalk. Moving those back into parking medians or islands that will project over both sides, moving the lane assigning, assignment, sign that spans the whole street, moving that again onto private property in East Min area, so we open up that sidewalk so people can actually navigate it. And then I think the other thing is we, we believe we can get away with probably less lights in the downtown core just because there's so much lighting already with the buildings. But we can, that way we can save some money and do more decorative poles that can handle our flower baskets, things like that. And then we don't have, you know, effectively utility poles in the middle of our downtown.
LEDs, do you think?
Yep.
Okay.
No spillover.
Right.
Yep.
Right. More concentrated, right?
Yep.
Is the cost, is there any cost taken up by the Wisconsin DOT with any of this improvement, or is this completely city?
No, they, generally the way it's set up is that they pay for the travel lanes. And then we, at least that's the proposal right now, is that they pay for the travel, we pay for the parking area.
Got it.
Yep. And then any other right-of-way improvements, correct? Yep.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'd like to see the staff get something proposed to send to them. I agree with this. I don't know if you need formal motion or not.
It's on here for action, so.
I'll move that we approve what you have presented to us for the thirty-five project.
Second that.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion possible action on ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen amending municipal code chapter ninety-nine animals to allow beekeeping in the city of Hudson.
Hi, guys.
Begging off, huh?
Yep. So last time this was discussed was at the September fourth common council meeting where it was sent back to community development for a first reading proposal. Since then, like about a month ago, since then, I've had the pleasure of getting to meet with a few of our local beekeepers, a couple of whom are in the audience with us tonight, and got to make a few revisions based on their feedback. So the issue sheet that you should all have in front of you has the listed proposed revisions made to the amendment. They are the addition of language to allow residents with no acceptable space in their backyards to otherwise prefer beekeeping in their side yards. We recognize that not all yards are laid out the same. They'll have hills here and there, so have to make it work for everybody from there. Removed some language about splitting hives for no more than two months because we agreed with beekeepers. We felt that was a bit ridiculous.
So you satisfied that with the beekeepers?
Yeah.
For people that know how to do it?
Yeah. Exactly. We also added language on splitting hives and listed appropriate reasons for beekeepers to do so, so further clarified on that. And then we created a scaled system that allows for a certain number of hives based on the size of the lot that it's going to be done on. I made the system as simple as I could, made it basically so that you could allow two to four hives per parcel, depending on the size. If it's like a half an acre or less, it's up to two hives, and if it's between a half an acre to a full acre, it'd be up to four hives on the property. We also removed language about hive inspections because again, I don't know enough about hives to inspect them myself. And I don't want beekeepers to have to pay for services incurred on that end. So we removed that requirement but kept the site inspections requirement in there. It's a necessary thing so I can go in, check setbacks and stuff, so. From there, removed language about honeybees need to be kept in hives with removable frames. Not all hives are constructed the same, so they don't always have removable frames. We don't want to inhibit beekeepers' ability to use the tools they want, so we wanted to make that simpler for them. We also added a flyway barrier requirement and then added a permit application and fee deadline of April first of each year. And that was actually a suggestion from the beekeepers themselves. They recommended that date in particular because if you don't know you're going to be beekeeping by that point for the year, then you're not fully prepared enough to do it. And we also changed language about beehives being located a certain distance or setback, I guess, from recreational areas such as like playground equipment, pools, easy bows, decks, et cetera. It was originally set at fifty feet, but we dropped it down to thirty to make it easier on them and also to make it kind of match our accessory building setback requirements as well. And then further along that clarification, we added some, a definition for recreational areas to be, again, easier understood. So yeah, if you've got any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
I've got a question. In the prohibited conduct, no beekeeper shall sell honey on site unless the property is commercially zoned and a certificate of compliance is approved. So does that mean that they can't have people come to their home and just pick up a quart of honey, or what does that really mean?
They can't sell it from like a table or whatever, like, yeah. If they want to like sell it.
They can't set up a store?
Right, essentially.
I'll move we approve, but I don't see in the, on our, that the first reading date is in there.
September fourth.
I think it's in the issue sheet.
Yeah.
Okay, but I will move.
That could be added.
Okay, I will move to approve twenty-one dash eighteen.
Do you need to set a fee? I mean, is that already set in the ordinance?
You want to do that separately, so you only do it as a resolution or something, so you can change it?
I think it was just set up as for right now, and then it could be changed by motion and incorporated into the fee resolution.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion?
So is the fee, is the fee thirty? Am I right about that?
Forty.
Forty?
Forty.
Twenty dollars.
Initial fee is forty, and then any years beyond that would be twenty or twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that, what's the basis for that? I mean, I see the list of fees everywhere else and are quite, quite a range. Is that, how does that relate to the fees we charge, inspection fees we might charge for similar? This, this is pretty, a pretty lightweight inspection.
Do you mean like, for example, sign permits and whatnot, or billing permits?
Simple, simple inspections, which I consider this, from what I can see, is a fairly simple inspection. Not requiring much effort on our part.
Go out there, inspect, you know, we, we look at what the inspectors generally charge for a simple, like, you know, road and control inspection, things like that. It's right in line with that. It's, it's meant to, to not be really cumbersome and onerous, you know, so, we don't want to make it a hindrance to somebody establishing a hive if they have to.
But we cover our costs.
Yes, correct. Yeah, but it covers our costs for our vehicles to go out there and, you know, look at it. Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on convening in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub E to deliberate regarding negotiation strategy relating to the adjacent municipalities non-renewal of their contracts with the city of Hudson for St. Croix EMS services and pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub G. To confer with legal counsel regarding strategy, the governing body may adopt in litigation in which the city is likely to become involved relating to those contracts.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to go into closed session. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Whoever.
Yes.
Epping Hod.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Motion's approved. We're going to closed session. Step across the hall. We are back in open session. Got the TV on? Everything sound good? All right, so we are coming out of closed session. Item C reconvene in open session for discussion of possible action. There is no action tonight. There will be no report tonight. This will be continued for further discussion at a, at a special meeting, probably. That will be announced soon. All right, so given the lateness of the hour, we are gonna drop down to nine C. We've got some folks here. Obviously, everybody in here's been waiting, but this is discussion of possible action on final development plan certificate of compliance and downtown overlay district design review for Second Street condominiums at five seventeen Second Street, Clearview Developers LLC.
On December of two thousand and seventeen, the Plan Commission approved concept plans for a twelve-unit condo building at the old Dibos Hotel location within a number of conditions, including a couple of variances that needed to take place for the height of the building. It's in the Riverway District. It's held to forty-five feet in height, but the elevator shaft protrudes a little bit higher than that. They also received a variance for parking. The standards of the parking are reduced a little bit as they have a, effectively a, almost it's a conveyor belt type system, a parking garage in the back of the building, so you drive in the back of the building, you go in, park in your spot, push your code in, and it shuffles you around to where your parking spot is. So they got both variances. Since that time, they've been completing their design process and have closed on the property and are looking for final development plan approval.
I'll move we approve. Plan Commission voted unanimously, just about unanimous, I think Pat, do you remember?
Yep, it was unanimous.
Yeah.
Unanimously on this, and it's a good addition to cleaning up that, that building.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you. Thanks for waiting. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Discussion possible action. This looks like you're cementing your seats. Discussion possible action on ordinance. Oh, wait, where am I?
Ninety.
Discussion possible action on St. Croix EMS director and/or interim director position and current and future status of St. Croix EMS.
So I kind of want to talk to you guys about sort of what, what direction we want to head. Obviously, with a lot, with the resignation of Brandon and, and then the subsequent letting go of Joe Elkin, we are without an interim director. And obviously, within this, we had an EMS commission meeting last week where the town of Hudson is backing out of the contract with St. Croix EMS. My understanding from that meeting that the town of Hudson is, is going to contract with Lakeview beginning January first of twenty nineteen. And so obviously, they're asking if we can get out of the contract, but that's not why I'm bringing this up. The Village of North Hudson, the representative on the commission said that they would want to contract as well with Lakeview. However, I don't know that the entire board of the Village of Hudson voted that way. So, and then the town of Troy is also backing out of the contract, but not looking to leave that quickly. At the end of the day, the, the town of Troy, the town of Hudson, rather, is contracting with Lakeview and, and I'm really seeing, I'm not seeing how they'll be moving in without taking at least some of the transfers out of Hudson hospitals, and that's sort of why I kind of point-blank asked Mr. Foster if he realized that by taking transfers, that's, that's sort of the, the start of the demise of St. Croix EMS, which he acknowledged. So I guess what I'm looking for from our group is, is direction from where we want to head from here. And I've kind of spent a lot of time with us over the last week and beyond and kind of distilled sort of two decisions at this point. One, I think, is an option of naming interim chief. It is my opinion, and we can discuss this. I kind of want to go through sort of everything first, but we can certainly discuss this. But I'm of the opinion that our service has been obviously hit with two paramedics down with Mr. Elkin and Brandon. That we need to, in my opinion, look from without our service rather than from within our service for naming an interim chief. I think we need a little bit of outside perspective into St. Croix EMS to, to sort of help stabilize our service. You know, as, as Mr. Foster pointed out in, in that commission meeting, we've been dealing with staffing issues, you know, it's not been the last two months, right? It's been, it's been a couple of years. So you know, sort of to help stabilize St. Croix EMS with that interim director for a short time, six to eight months, I would, I would assume, while we try to find a director, which I believe we should be searching outside of our service again for a director to come in. So all told, I mean, I think that process realistically looks to be two years from now. To get to a stable with a new director, it could be less than that. But I don't know that it would be by much. I think, and that's one option. Again, I want to discuss that. I think another option is that, is that we look from without again. I think we have, I think there are other options out there to help manage St. Croix EMS. So I would throw it to the group for discussion to advertise a request for proposal for contracting our EMS services for the city of Hudson, either in whole or in part. I don't know what the options could be out there. And sort of take it not as we're looking, not that we're advertising and getting a whole bunch of documents and making a decision off of that, right? It's sitting down, interviewing potential other entities, potentially other solutions to St. Croix EMS themselves. I heard a great option earlier today with, from Josh. I would like to hear that proposal. But I think at this. this point, I think we need to look at options and see what's out there. So with that, you know, I put some language around what that would look like. And I have to beg your forgiveness because I kind of came up with this language just within the last few days about what the intent of that proposal, that RFP, if you will, would look like. You know, before, and I do want to read this so that it is for the record, but before I do that, you know, I want to make a couple of points. You know, unlike the town of Hudson, who is contracting with another service, and if we want to truly look at other options, I think as a government agency, we should be looking at multiple options, not just one option. I would like to also invite our partners to be a part of this process. And really, again, it's not taking what's on paper. It's meeting, it's interviewing, very similar to what we did to figure out who we're going to have build our new fire station. It's sitting down with people who, who applied and asking them questions and having our chiefs there, right? Scott St. Martin for the fire, right? We're all a team here. And also asking community, or I'm sorry, our county partners as well, county dispatch, to ask questions from a broad range. So it would be a series of interviews. I would want it to be an open process. And at the end of the day, the intent, again, is for all or for part. I don't know what that solution is or what that solution could be, but I got to think that there's more solutions out there. And I think, you know, I came to you guys with an RFP, right, for a study, and that was back in July. And the language with that RFP was with Brandon's help and with Brenda's help. But a lot has happened since Brandon, and I think the clock is ticking. Obviously, the town of Hudson is making that clock tick faster. So, so with that, and up for discussion, I guess I would like to make a motion to advertise a request for proposal with the intent as written for, well, actually, before I get that, the proposed request for proposal language is what I did want to read to begin with. It is the intent of the city of Hudson to receive proposals from potential contractors to provide in whole or in part nine-one-one emergency and non-emergency care and transport with basic life support, BLS, and advanced life support, ALS, three hundred and sixty-five days per, twenty-four hours per day. City of Hudson will form a committee to entertain proposals and to interview potential providers who submit proposals. The committee will seek an ambulance service with a strong track record of delivering high-quality care and reliable service at a reasonable price. This is sort of, obviously, it's just a paragraph. It would be a larger document going out there to be advertised, but that is the intent that I'm proposing. So up for discussion would be a motion that I would like to make to advertise a request for proposal with the intent that I just read as written. We're contracting with a provider, the city of Hudson's EMS services in whole or in part. Additionally, to invite our other governmental partners, town of Hudson, Village of North Hudson, and town of Troy, to join us in this search as we are stronger together. To revise this RFP to reflect coverage area additions should some or all of our partners decide to join. Lastly, to conduct interviews with a committee comprised of various stakeholders, including but not limited to city of Hudson public safety chiefs, finance director, county dispatch, elected officials of both the city of Hudson and its partners, should they join. And so I'm throwing that out on the table. I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion of second. The, that was your motion that you just read?
Correct.
Can you read that again, or do you have a copy of that?
I'll get a copy.
Here you go. Here's a copy. Here's due.
Stereo.
And I do have to apologize. I apologize to Mayor O'Connor. I know that we haven't had this discussion about exactly what I was proposing here, but, and I'm just asking for everybody's open mind with this, so.
So Bill, what do we do in an interim? And the fact that we can't attract people, what are we going to do? How do we fill the gap? Who leads downstairs? Who leads EMS right now?
Josh Olson.
Okay.
As manager.
Okay.
And I know that we have a closed session to talk about compensation for the great work that he's doing.
So that's your pick for interim, because the way it kind of read here, EMS director and/or interim director position. So we're talking about two different things here. So you're saying Josh will be the acting interim director until we find an outside person?
I'm suggesting that there's an option of us naming an interim director and vetting and finding a director, or the option that I'm actually on the table right now with is doing an RFP, doing a request for proposal for our service. And in the interim, that we would ask Josh to do the great job that Josh is doing right now, keeping our service afloat.
Okay. I just, I guess I don't disagree, but how are we going to attract someone to come in to this?
Through advertisement. Sorry, I don't mean to flip about that, but.
You know what I mean. I mean, it's a mess, kind of, right now. No ill will towards anybody that's working on it right now. How are we going to attract the quality candidate that you're trying to look for? With all those variables out there, including the one we just got out of closed session with, how do we attract that?
There are a number of providers in our service area, correct?
Right.
I mean, there is Lakeview, who town of Hudson is contracting with.
I'm specifically talking about director, really.
Oh, director. So if we were to go that route.
You're throwing two things there. You're looking for director?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is I think there's two different paths. And the path, what I'm suggesting is I don't know that we have time for that one path, which is to name an interim director and then to vet and find a director.
Okay.
Because I feel that that, from the financials, is going to be, you know, to get to stabilization, I think is, from my view, is going to be a year and a half to two years out. And at that point, we can start talking sustainability.
So you have a motion on the table that have two issues? Is that one?
No, so, no.
I think just the RFP.
Just the RFP is what is on the table.
Okay. So we're kind of splitting number eight in half then, right? Is that what I'm? Discussion of possible action on St. Croix EMS director and/or interim position and then current future status of St. Croix EMS.
Bill's proposal.
So you're addressing the latter, the EMS.
Correct.
Okay, with the RFP.
Correct.
And then?
And I am negating. What I'm suggesting is that we do not name an interim director as we go through this process.
Okay. But you are having Josh Olson as the interim director?
No, as operation supervisor.
As an operation supervisor, as he is.
Okay, clarifying that. All right.
I mean, it's up for discussion. Obviously, we're at a motion and a second right now, and.
So a couple of clarification questions?
Yep.
And thanks for bringing it forward. One, is there a sense of like a date when you would like to see this by, like, to receive these by?
To receive the request for proposals. Well, okay, so let's back into this for a second, right? So we have to advertise for how long? Do we have to advertise?
You'd have to have at least two publications in the month. Paper of record, which is Star Observer.
Two weeks.
So you'd be looking at, at least you'd get it to be next week, which would be the eleventh of, so it'd have to be the eleventh, at least the eleventh and the eighteenth, if we were to get it to them this week.
Gotcha. I would hope for proposals by no later than November. Here's the question. The question really comes down to will our partners join us in this, right? Because the RFP then would be talking about our larger area, right? So you got to give them a week. I was hoping that we could turn this around in three weeks, get our proposals back. So with our partners, yeah, you're looking at thirty days.
So the idea would be we would communicate this to the partners and possibly bring them into the process?
Correct.
And the other question is, your last line, the committee will seek an ambulance service with a strong track record of delivering high-quality care and reliable service at a reasonable price. That doesn't exclude St. Croix EMS.
Correct.
But St. Croix EMS would have to submit an RFP in this process.
Correct.
If they wanted to continue as the provider for the city.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, on this piece, you're out here, with the, with the fire station build, we interviewed, did we interview the lion's share of everybody? Everybody?
I think we had four or seven, some responded, and we interviewed four.
Four?
I believe.
Okay.
So.
I would, I would love to, because what I really learned with this interview process is, I think if you look at that, if you look at everybody that submitted and you saw what was on paper, I think you're probably making a little bit of a different decision than when you actually interviewed them, right? I would, I would love to entertain, and I would assume that there's a very limited amount of people who would come forward to submit this proposal, right? I would like to interview all of them. So yes, St. Croix EMS, yes, absolutely.
And then do you have a sense of a deadline date for, we could approach the partners with, to see if they would like to, see if they're interested in working on this with us, being a part of the committee and being a part of the folks receiving the RFP, having a voice in the process?
In terms of reaching out to them?
In terms of saying to them, hey, would you like to, in terms of their response to us if we were to do this?
Well, the next EMS commission seems like an obvious choice, but I would like to, I would perhaps ask Mayor O'Connor to reach out to, to the other heads of our partners and see if they would be open to joining us.
Yeah, absolutely. I would do that as quickly as possible.
Right.
I would get it done in the next day or two.
Okay, even better, because I really don't want to wait until the next EMS commission. And nor would I want to necessarily approach just the EMS commission members first, you know.
When do our partners meet again? And when do they meet? They just meet once a month, don't they?
Usually, I believe the village is the first Tuesday, I think. And I think the town don't, I think they meet the same night.
So tomorrow?
Theoretically, I, yeah. I could look. I'll look while you're, see if they have it posted.
But I would, I would get the sense that they're not going to be able to necessarily turn around a decision that quickly. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean.
No, I appreciate the invitation. I think that's really important.
So the only concern I have on this right now is the makeup of the people that you have here.
Mm-hmm. And mind you, I'm writing this yesterday, based off of some other information. So I don't know. I mean, that's why I said not limited to, I don't think, but.
Well, in fact, no, I think it's, might be a little too broad.
I would say that this committee, I like to hear questions from a lot of different aspects. I wouldn't necessarily ask that all those members have a vote, if that's what your question is.
Yeah, so I presume that this committee would make a recommendation to us and to, let's say, our partners agree to go in on this.
Correct.
And the respective bodies would, representatives would go to their, back to their bodies for a vote. But it's the recommendation that concerns me. So I don't know that, frankly, I don't know that I want somebody from the county involved in that. I'm a little nervous about our public safety chiefs being involved in this.
From what end?
I think that it puts them in a bad spot, one that I don't really care to put them in.
To, I'm sorry, to making a decision or to asking the questions?
Asking questions is fine, but to be voting on a recommendation that would be sent to us, I don't want to put them in that position.
And nor would I ask them for, well, I think there's, you know, I sat down with, with Scott and Jeff this afternoon to just ask them, you know, what, what, with Lakeview coming in for the town of Hudson, what issues would come to light? What, what would we need, you know, Jeff mentioned, you know, Narcan is one of those things, right? So training. So I really want some subject matter experts asking questions about.
I would agree with that, but I don't know that they need to be at the table. I don't need, know that they need to be part of this committee. And given what we have seen with the volatility of this issue and what it has done in various mediums, social media in particular, I really don't care to subject our chief of police and our fire chief to that with any type of recommendation they may make. I don't think that that's fair to them. I don't think it's right, frankly. So, but do they have, are they a stakeholder? I'd say, yeah. Do they have the ability, are they, are they going to be bringing to the table the perspective that needs to be heard? Absolutely. But I do not want to put them in a position where they're going to be voting to make a recommendation and then have them subjected to the type of abuse that other people have been subjected to.
So you're open to them being a part of the interview process?
Or whether they're at the table or provide us with written questions that we could ask. But then I would excuse them before any recommendation is ever made.
I think I'd concur a little bit there. We can get their information.
Just a little bit?
Outside of that.
Just a little bit?
Just to clarify, the town and the village both meet tomorrow evening. The town, I'm sorry, the town of Hudson and the village of North Hudson and town of Troy meets the eleventh. That's when their meeting is on.
Is that a big part of your piece, Bill, just having that? To get their input.
I just want subject matter experts at the table, not to make a recommendation, just to ask the questions. And if that's a list of questions that were given by them, then that's a list of questions, I guess. I just want, you know.
You know, for purposes of this motion, can we just kind of strike that and say that to be determined later?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay.
A committee whose members are to be determined later, yeah.
Because the partners also might want to weigh in who they want to say that.
Right. Is that agreeable?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, sure. I guess I need to ask a question here, Bill.
Yes.
So what you're really doing here tonight is asking us to make a binding decision to privatize Hudson EMS.
No.
Because we are going to be open to reject all of the proposals?
Absolutely.
You can do that with any...
I mean, I...
Say this again?
I kind of feel as though we're, so we've got a lot on the table. We have very difficult decisions with the closed session we just had. And now we're going to be making a vote to privatize Hudson EMS.
No.
Or accepting proposals to privatize Hudson EMS.
Accepting proposals from other entities to, that we can contract with in whole or in part. I don't know what solutions are out there. I would like to see what solutions there are. And it's a non-binding, non-binding advertisement, right? I mean, I looked at a proposal, an RFP that went out for Burnett County, right? The entire county wanted to contract with, for EMS services, so a lot of different towns within Burnett County, right? And in there, it says that they are not bound to make an award for a contract. And that would be part of the RFP. Meaning, right, I mean, that's standard, right?
All our bids and RFPs are cities for you to reject.
We can reject. I'm not asking us to privatize. I'm just asking us to look. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm asking us to do the next step to a study, which is to see what is out there, what is possible. And then take that information and make the best decision that we can from a fiduciary standpoint, but also the safety of our community.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it if I didn't think, if we were going to, if it binds us, for sure. Because I'm not ready and prepared to do that.
Right.
Does that make sense?
And that's why I was asking about Hudson, or St. Croix EMS. They can put a package together. We can, this doesn't really tie our hands, I think, in terms of anything. It just, to me, I think it just gives us things to look at. And ultimately, you know, we would decide, and the partners, hopefully, if they're a part of the process, can, hopefully, we'll draw them into the process, too.
I would like to see some commitment for our, for St. Croix EMS as far as leadership at this table and in our staff, city staff from Devon, and anyone to be able to help them put together a reasonable... Because I think we're asking something of people to put together a request for a proposal that might, I mean, their skills are in life-saving. So we're asking, you're asking our own Hudson EMS, or St. Croix EMS, to put together a proposal. And I would just want to affirm to them that we'll be there to help them with that, each of us individually and the city staff. Because I want to make sure that we're showing them that we support them and that we're here for them. So I want to make that very, very clear.
And I would go so far as to say that if that response to that proposal were to be a preliminary and not a final piece by St. Croix EMS, that I would love to talk through that. Does that make sense?
No, what do you mean?
Yeah, what do you mean? Sorry.
I mean, it's a preliminary proposal, instead of just like a final, final proposal with numbers around it, that we actually investigate it, that we actually interview that whole process. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I'm still following.
You're asking Brenda to be part of the decision-making, or to be involved at the table, and then you're being, then you're asking staff to help one of the groups that's...
We've struck, struck from the, from the motion, who is going to be on the committee, you know, that it'll be determined later, so...
Well, I understand that, but...
We're not yet asking Brenda to be there, but I suspect that we would.
So there could, you see what I'm saying? Depending on who you're going to ask to help evaluate these proposals, can't be the same people that are putting in a proposal.
Brenda's not putting in a proposal. She's providing accounting assistance to...
And that's fine. I mean, just, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're...
The potential people that are putting together proposals, that you're expecting to receive them from, have departments. They have accounting departments. They have, they have departments, right? So I want to be fair, very, very fair to our own St. Croix EMS, that they are given, you know, equal amount of tools to be able to put together something like that, that, that we're not setting them up for failure by doing this. And additionally, you know, I know everyone wants things to rock and roll really quick. But based on our decision in closed session, or lack thereof, that this conversation, we could all chew on this a little bit as well and put this at the next council meeting. I think that this is, I know for me, it surely came up really fast. And there's not a lot of meat on these bones to be able to really offer up good suggestions to flush it out a little bit before it actually would get a thumbs up.
Yeah, I think I'd like to, some time to think about this as well.
I can see your perspective. I wish I wasn't having to call for a vote or not having, but the sense that I got from EMS commission is the time is ticking.
There's no harm to see what's going on.
We all understand that.
I know.
And that's, that's the point. I mean, seriously, we're all going to be making that decision together. And if we don't feel like it's right to, after the fact, not contract with anybody, I mean, what's the harm in looking? Does that make sense? I mean, we're not saying that we're privatizing, and we're not suggesting selling EMS services. We are suggesting looking at other providers to see what they can offer. I mean, I, I don't know.
It might be as simple as management, as opposed to actually taking over the operation. It could, you know, it could be, there are a lot of different pieces. It could be offering certain resources that they have, that we pay perhaps inordinately large amounts. So we might be able to, the administration piece perhaps could be taken over by people who already have those resources for a more reasonable fee. So that's, that's what we're looking for. That's what I look at this. It's the whole, there's a whole gamut of possibilities out there. You know, some from bringing your own trucks in, taking the whole thing over, hiring our people, to say, okay, we're going to provide you the interim directorship for two years, given these, this is our criteria, and we, this is how we will manage that. So that's, that's one, you know, that's a possibility. So it could, there's, we're just trying to say, or at least I look at this and say, what's out there? Who can help us? And that was one of the things the ad hoc committee struggled with when we came up with the proposal. We said, we really need some more professional help, and we need people who are involved in EMS services to say, this is how we can tackle this, and to provide some ideas. And perhaps the solution. That's, that's what I would hope, is the solution comes out of this, is that we don't get more ideas to go working on. We've done enough of that.
But sir, I really appreciate your point about supporting our local EMS, and I hear what you're saying. And I think that this doesn't necessarily exclude that, but I also think this kind of sends a mixed message. And so that can be, I think, a little bit confusing. So I understand what you're saying.
It sends a very mixed message. And I think, having been, I have parallels in my life where I was told, do this and come back in a couple of weeks, and, you know, we'll fix that situation for you. And in fact, some of it happened in this very room. You have a, consider this doc issue from this perspective. And then, so, okay, we go off and we do it from that perspective, and we come back with all these great ideas, or so we thought, and then, no, 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 not that perspective. Nope, sorry, boom. And so I feel like we're giving a lot of mixed messages over and over to our St. Croix EMS. And it's causing some of this turmoil. We keep saying that they have problems. They, it's not they, they are us. We are them. And, and now we're doing it again. Or that's what the proposal is on the table, is to, you know, now if you fix your staffing model, if we fix this or fix that, and every time it gets back to this room, then we're sending them another different direction to go off into. And now we're asking them to come up with a proposal to keep their paycheck coming from the city of Hudson. And we're, I mean, that would be like me going to my sales department and says, you know, I want you to come up with a proposal to keep your job. I don't know. It just doesn't seem right to me. I'd really like to let it resonate with us a little bit.
I've been there, so it happens.
To let it rest, just so we can all digest it and have conversations with, and all be confident that we have the tools to support St. Croix EMS so that they can write a proposal like that. I just want to flush it out a little bit more before having it come to us now and making a really quick decision. I mean, I see it as a, as a vote to take the first step to privatizing and selling St. Croix EMS. So that's how I feel.
I guess I have to say, it does open that avenue as a possibility, but there are a lot of other possibilities. Over the last year, we've examined other possibilities. So there are, there are other ways of doing it other than selling and saying we're selling and privatizing this. That's not the only option that this opens up. There are a number of partnerships out there that we've seen. So I don't feel that threatened by this. We can still say, no, we're not going to do that. And that's always, that's still the choice, but...
I see this as the first step. Sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
I see this as the first step, not to privatization. I see this as the first step to potentially, depending how they choose, to diffuse what potentially is the first step of the demise, potential demise of St. Croix EMS. By that, I mean the town of Hudson contracting with Lakeview.
Which not, which isn't a, I don't think it's a conclusion that if they do go with Lakeview, that it's for sure a demise. I still think that we could figure out the situation and potentially not have it be the demise. For the record.
Okay, everybody good? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on ordinance 25-18 amending chapter 106-17 of the municipal code.
This came through Public Safety, was approved.
Yeah, this...
Okay. It's essentially allowing some different options for pool safety. Catherine's reviewed it. David Gray went out and looked at several municipalities, what they had. So this is what David is proposing.
Correct.
And it was approved by Public Safety.
Yep, and I'll move to suspend, do we need to suspend the rules?
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morrisette.
Yes.
Yes.
Dazeal.
Yes.
Weber. Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 25-18.
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
At the risk of reopening things, did our action there on 9A that we just voted on, did that eliminate the discussion on the...
Oh, good question.
Director and interim director?
Question.
Weren't we going in the closed session for that?
Closed session is to discuss compensation for the operations supervisor.
All right, so let's, let's back up. Discussion of possible action on St. Croix EMS director and our interim director position and current and future status of St. Croix EMS. Bill, anything?
I'm, I guess I move to not name an interim director and not advertise for a director at this point.
Second.
All right, motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion's approved.
I'm going to vote in hand that one, too.
Okay, record that as a no vote for Paul.
Four to two, sorry.
Four to two. Thank you for bringing that up, Jim. I don't have anything other than to recommend that, try to keep these meetings a little bit tighter and shorter.
You made the agenda.
Not really. I just agreed to it. I didn't kick anything out this time. All right, so any, how about you guys? Anything?
Just real quickly, I don't know if anybody's still watching, but we are open for in-person absentee voting now up until the Friday before the elections, so that can be done here in City Hall.
We've got the Finance Committee meeting on Monday to discuss the budget, so anybody interested in that?
Real quickly, JV volleyball champions and Raider football varsity is going again to playoffs.
Right on. Thank you for that. All right, discussion of possible action on convening into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, sub 1, sub G, to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation in which the city is likely to become involved relating to a sewer backup claim at 1532 Northridge Drive, Hudson, Wisconsin. B, pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to discuss compensation for EMS. Oh, C, okay, sub 1, sub C, to discuss compensation for EMS operations supervisor. And C, pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, sub 1, sub C, and sub 1, sub E, to deliberate regarding Joe Elkins' grievance of his termination from city employment as a paramedic and possible negotiating strategy relating thereto. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to go into closed session. Roll call.
Morrisette.
Yes.
Yes.
Dazeal.
Yes.
Weber. Yes.
Atkins Hoggit. Yes.
Hall. Yes.
Motion's approved. We are now in closed session. We'll meet across the hall. Is anybody in there to clean up after the last one? An open session.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call. Morrisette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Dazeal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Did I say that the right way? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm very wrong.
No.
Move to approve the resolution 15-18.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved. Moving on to the next item. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute...
Compensation for the operations supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we give Josh a stipend of $500 a week to fulfill the duties that he's been given.
I'll second.
Retro active to...
Two nine.
And until the council...
Until the council directs otherwise.
Okay.
Still second.
There was a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute... Oh, the decision, yeah, okay, so, deliberate regarding Joe Elkin's grievance of his termination.
So, I have a motion to direct our city attorney to prepare a written decision to be signed by Mayor O'Connor to affirm our previous decision to terminate Mr. Elkin as an employee of St. Croix EMS.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
I also, Mr. Mayor, have a second, motion to authorize our city attorney to prepare a settlement agreement with Mr. Elkin.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Stand adjourned.